Two. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid fashion as is allowed through recent legislative action. So item number one, this pledge allegiance, Charles, would you?
I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item two, public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum on anything on the agenda today? Anybody on the here?
Yeah, sure.
Well, it's going to be on an item on the agenda. Okay, and then at the end of the meeting, you'll be able to talk about the.
Basketball, can't talk right now?
Yeah, the public forum at the front side is limited to actions that we're.
Oh, okay.
At the end.
It's number nine all the, I thought it was an agenda item.
It's not, not unless it's actually listed as.
Oh.
Unless, are you in a hurry? You need to get on to somewhere else?
No, okay.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, item number two, as I said, public forum, anyone wishing to address the board on any item on the agenda? Move on to item three, improvements. The April fourth, twenty twenty-two meeting, is there a motion?
Some moved.
That's the second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, suggested changes, et cetera? Hearing none, let's try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, refuses, hearing none, motion carries. Item four, town engineer, Janice Plaziac, to discuss or take possible action on Boston Street sidewalk work by the on-call contractor, William Leighton Construction LLC. Good morning, Janice.
Good morning, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
You? Good. I'm doing well, thanks, yeah. I just, I wanted to bring this forward. We have an opportunity to do some upgrades to the sidewalk system prior to the DOT paving. And some of it is to, obviously, we're going to be using the fifty thousand dollar annual capital budget and focusing primarily on Boston Street, not the section for the extension that we're having a public meeting on Wednesday night for. But this is where we already have an existing sidewalk network. And one of the items is to extend sidewalks in that little gap that we have between Lover's Lane and one thirty-one Boston Street. There's about a three hundred and twenty-five foot gap in the sidewalk system that I like to infill with sidewalks as well as then at the crosswalk at the intersection of Lover's Lane to put in the appropriate handicap ramps. And then the other location we're focusing on is improving the handicap ramp at the intersection of South Union Street and doing a section of sidewalks from that ramp to the south to improve the sidewalks in that area that are in bad condition. And then there's also a section of bad-conditioned sidewalks in front of ninety-five Boston Street that we would like to, like to replace prior to the paving project as well. Our contractor said he can get in right away to get this work done prior to the paving. And with your approval of that sidewalk extension, and then I would use the balance of the monies allocated for this year to do other sidewalk improvements throughout the network where we have tripping hazards.
Any other questions?
Janice, it sounds like the state has scheduled the one forty-sixth paving. What is that schedule?
We don't have an exact schedule yet from them. They haven't had the pre-con meeting, but talking to the local foreman for the maintenance garage, they're hoping to have the milling taking place mid to late May. And then I'm not exactly sure, hopefully having the paving follow that.
And even once they give us a timeframe, it's often weather-dependent and/or schedule-dependent because they have, what do you call it? The ways and means or not ways and means, but the.
Means and methods, yeah, they have, they use, yeah, they use the vendor-in-place program where there's, you know, vendors in place for state bid, and then they have to schedule with them to get the work done. If you notice now, right now, the DOT is marked out to replace the catch basin tops along the route. So they have a lot of prep work to do themselves prior to the paving. So I feel we have a window of opportunity here to, to jump in and get some of these improvements done as well.
Are there going to be any large milling, storage area for this project as there have been for other projects in the past?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, the, the state is required to handle their own millings. In the past, the, the town has accepted millings from state paving projects, but that, that's not a practice we intend to continue unless we have a true defined use for those millings.
I was more concerned about the large, you know, if the contractor has a plan for a storage like they did up there where U-Haul is now. And I, I know we don't plan on using them as much as we did in the past, but I, I just would like to know if the contractor has any plans for a large storage area.
Not, not to my knowledge, it's, again, we haven't had the pre-con meeting, but typically as part of the project, the state will possibly have it re-brought back to the Tilkon or whatever plant to be recycled is probably the best bet. Or if they have a use for it, they would store it on one of their own properties. Quite frankly, anyone, any property owner who plans to do material storage for any length of time technically needs to get a site plan approval through our planning and zoning commission. So I'm not aware of any desires to do that, and recycling the material is probably the best reuse of it.
Always remember the U-Haul project, I mean, that's close, I can't show.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, Janice, are you comfortable that the remaining, remaining funds are sufficient to cover the tripping hazards and other things that you're planning on doing? No problem there?
Well, we'll do what we can with it. You know, if I tried to fix every tripping hazard, we wouldn't have enough money.
Right.
I certainly focus on the ones that people brought to our attention first, and then if there's any other egregious ones, we'll use up the balance of the money for that. And then, as you know, we, we do budget an annual fifty thousand dollars to keep some ability to get these things addressed.
Shouldn't it arise to go beyond that fifty thousand? We have the reserve account under sidewalks.
Right.
So, and, and my question was, was this one of the targeted areas for the Safe Streets Task Force that they?
Certainly, the extension was a targeted area for them in terms of that gap that exists on the south side of Boston Street, which connects the town center to Lover's Lane, which obviously, you know, is highly used during the fair and the parades and things like that. So it's a, it's an obvious gap when we did our walk with the, with the group around town. And certainly, the handicap ramps are important to get upgraded to be, you know, compliant. And certainly, the one down by South Union Street, I know Safe Streets Task Force is focusing on the schools, areas around the schools for sidewalks, either extensions or improvements. So trying to kind of keep it in that vein and taking the opportunity to get this concrete work done before the paving happens so that, you know, we won't have any patches in the road that that'll be, you know, fixed with the paving.
Good, thank you. Anything else?
The gap on Bus Street is the south side, right? That's the.
Yes.
Plain side. So will that, will that connect all the way to the street, South Union where Lead is?
No, it's, it's going to connect. No, it'll connect Lover's Lane to the sidewalk net, network that takes you into this town center. Yeah.
Oh.
Boy, it'd be really nice to ever be able to get to Lead, but you got to get around that.
Yeah.
Well, there's sidewalks already, so this will bring you to, yeah, there's the sidewalks, then just stay on one side of the road.
That's a tough crosswalk.
Yeah.
Well, we got the sidewalk commission now. But you would think connecting Lead to downtown would be valuable.
On that side, yeah, on both sides of the road as opposed to.
Yes. That crosswalk is problematic and tightly used.
Yeah. Okay, is there a motion then to authorize Janice to enter into work with our on-call contractor, William Leighton Construction LLC? Do the work as just described and not exceed the fifty thousand dollar annual, the fifty thousand.
I'm looking.
Second.
Take further? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For those staying, refuses, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. All right, item five, finance director, Mary Jane, good morning. Great, Mary Jane, we have some challenges with your audio. Go ahead.
Come down.
You want to come down? Good.
Say when it works, it's great.
That's her computer. Because Janice was fine, her audio was fine, so.
Yeah, are you with Tony?
Yeah.
How come it always?
Sorry, my audio and my video are having issues, but your audio was like really weird. I, I got a new camera, and this is my first time using it, and clearly, clearly, we have some technology. Okay, sorry about that.
All right, item one, she wants to report.
Okay, we'll start with revenues. I will see that we are at ninety-nine point six percent right now compared to ninety-eight point six percent back in twenty twenty, which is the year that we're really looking to use as our baseline correct. A couple of things I wanted to draw your attention to, you'll see that the town clerk line is already brought in more revenue than budgeted because of conveyance fees, and I bring that up because I'm going to talk about that on the expense side. And also tax collection, we are, we have brought in more than our budget, which some years we do because of previous tax collections. If you look at the detail, you'll see that we still have funds that are due for the current levy of about a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, but we've brought in almost four hundred thousand dollars more in prior year taxes. So that is, is what's bringing that number there, so.
Could I understand why we're using twenty twenty as a baseline?
Um, because that was the last, um, more normal year. Uh, we, I have all three of them here, twenty, I have twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two.
So you feel that twenty-one is more pandemic-type year?
Because of twenty, we were three-quarters, it hit on March.
Right, it hit, it hit on March, so around that, so.
Just, I, I find it interesting that we're closer to the pandemic year than we are the non-pandemic.
Well, because we're, we're still the revenue, we're still seeing that peak in revenue. So we're, you know, showing a little more closer to them, the pandemic, but twenty twenty is where we would be in a normal year. So I, I don't want to show that this is the revenue that possibly could be long-term. We, we could be going back to more twenty twenty revenues as time goes on. Hard to know, you know, we still don't have that crystal ball, but, so maybe somewhere in between. But the Board of Ed and the town has both been showing all three years, just for, for some little additional guidance.
Well, yeah, I liked it through here, I just wanted to make sure I understood. Or if there was something I didn't understand about the twenty twenty, because I would think pandemic years was interesting, that's.
Yeah, it, it's a matter of where we think we're going, you know, in the future, you can see, you can see both. As you've, as you said, we're a little bit closer to twenty-one, and that's because of these additional revenues, especially on the town clerk side and youth and family services, and those might continue for, for a little while. But I'm not quite convinced yet that's our new baseline long-term. Could be, it's hard to know.
I think with the changes in inflation grant list, this is a transition period for the next few years.
Right, tax collection is right about where we're typically see it. We didn't really have too much of a fluctuation in tax collection. You know, we had very good tax collection, right, even during the pandemic. So it's really the other revenue drivers that are, are making this.
Difference, right. And you were just mentioning the family services, they're already at almost twenty-five percent over there. Bushwood, the quarter of the year left ago. And Lynn has, our last department head meeting indicated that our caseload is up over a hundred youth or children, which is all. Our schools are seeing, you know, increased caseloads as well. All right, any other questions on revenue? Expenses.
Okay, on the spent expense side, first thing I want to draw your attention to is the town clerk. As I noted, when, when we have a tremendous amount of revenue in the conveyance fees, we also see on the expect, expense side, which is the recording fees. So it, one, one goes hand in hand with the other, so we see additional revenue. And here on the expense side, we see the additional expense. The other line item, information technology is, is high. We, we do have significant software expenses that we've added this year. We mid-year chose to move forward with the budgeting module that we used for this, the twenty twenty-three budget that had not been budgeted in this current year. We also, through Zen City, contracted to do a citizen survey, things like that. Brought this number close to a hundred percent already with the knowledge that we have the funding in the technology account to, to move that over. Youth and Family Services, as we talked about, is at ninety, almost ninety-five percent. Not necessarily driven by the pandemic, but driven by the fact that we haven't brought in the grant offsets for, for that department. So even though we have additional expenses related to counseling and other items in Youth and Family Services, we also have other funding sources that we're bringing in from regular grants, ARPA, and, and other areas. So that will, you know, not necessarily be overdrawn at the end, at the end of the year. But we, it is already getting to that point.
Any means.
It's okay, correct.
This year's budgeting, we were particularly struck by the medical increases, okay? We had a couple of large medical expenses that caused our history to rise. Will these potential income situations from Youth and Family Services, they also enter into that calculation?
No, the medical we talked about is only employee benefits, it's just the, the, the benefit. So unless we were to hire three full-time people over there and give them all family benefits.
So the medical.
Is only employee benefits, it has nothing to do with any other type of medical billing that we have.
It's not minimums or.
No, no, they do, Youth and Family Services does bill. Medical insurance for their cases is just that our caseload is.
Doesn't affect our insurance.
It does not, has no correlation.
Anything else on expenses?
Unless you guys have a question?
Unless, unless folks have questions on the ones.
Hopefully you don't have a question on the war, because I didn't bring my laptop with me, I was not. Although I could maybe answer it if you ask a question anyway. If you want to move on to medical.
Please.
If you see, if you draw your attention to the very bottom of this page, you see we are anticipating a deficit for the first time that we've seen in, in quite a while. It's, it's small, we're, we're only talking forty thousand dollars, and we have, you know, three more months in the year to go. It's tied mainly to admin, so I want to have a little conversation with our consultants for that. But you'll see that our, our claims are only showing a difference of about a hundred and sixteen thousand, so we're pretty good budgeting there. It's, it's really the admin that, that's, that's causing that. And maybe it'll balance out for the next couple of months, but I, I want to have a conversation there. But regardless, you've seen over the last few months, that surplus deficit number has gotten closer and closer and closer to zero. As we went last, last month, it, it was, the surplus was somewhere around forty thousand as well. You know, it was, it was a smaller, I don't want to say insignificant number, but you know, a relatively small number that we were showing as a surplus in this, this particular month, we dropped into a deficit. Clearly, our, our account can, can manage that with, with no problem. But that's exactly, you know, why, one of the reasons why we have that available to us. If you look at catastrophic claims, we're at about twenty-five, twenty-six percent there at this point. We have nineteen cases that are, have already hit the seventy-five thousand mark, which is where we start to really track. And we are up to five, I think last month we had three, we have five over the hundred and fifty thousand mark at, at this point.
Just a quick comment on the projected surplus or deficit for the fiscal. Our insurance consultant suggested was going to be happening, not only for next year, but for the balance of this year when we're going through those discussions in December and January.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not a surprise.
It's being realized. Anything else? All right.
All right, thank you very much.
You, we'll see you.
See you tonight. Go fix my computer now.
Get that ready. Okay, item number six, Board of Education Director of Operations, Cliff Gurnum. A couple of items here. Good morning, Cliff, the first of which is consider to take possible action to contract with Summer Hill Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors in the on-call list for design services for the replacement of fixed tennis courts at Gov'ron High School. Morning, Cliff.
Good morning, how are we doing? Thanks for having me. So we're moving forward, as you know, the Von Referendum passed, which was great news and in that we had the replacement of the tennis court. So we're moving along quickly on that project. We did pull Summer Hill off of the on-call bid list. On top of that, I did actually get two other proposals, but Summer Hill was still the lowest bidder for the project. So that was all reviewed by the Standing Building Committee, and the Standing Building Committee has recommended moving forward with Summer Hill in the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars to have this work done again over the next couple of months with the goal to have the tennis courts replaced over the summer while the students are, are off on summer break.
Got it. Thank you, Cliff. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the order of contract to Summer Hill Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors above the ninety-five hundred dollars?
Some moved.
And second, any further discussion? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, staying, refusing, motion. Cliff, item two, discuss to take possible actions of contract, a contract with consulting engineering services for the commissioning of the HVAC system at Cox School. Want to talk a little bit about that, Cliff?
Yes, so this is the last HVAC system that we presently are going to be installing in the near future. The work is scheduled for the summer, we've already gone ahead, we have a contractor in place for that work. Save More Construction, a lot of that equipment is onboard, they actually have it. So we'll be starting as soon as school lets out. But this piece is the commissioning of the system, we're trying to get the commission agent onboard early enough so that they can kind of review of the project as it moves forward. We got two proposals, both CES and the second one from Colliers, who we've done in the past. CES is the lowest bidder at twenty-two thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. These were both reviewed by the Standing Building Committee, and they recommended moving forward with CES. As far as funding, this is a bond from twenty twenty-one with a balance of about one point seven million, so we have plenty to fund this through.
Did I hear you say that they have the equipment in stock already?
They do. We signed the contract with Save More back in about, I want to say October. This project was supposed to be done last summer, and, and due to some issues, it was postponed to the summer of twenty twenty-two. So mainly because we didn't, we weren't able to get the equipment in time to do the work last summer. So we went ahead with that contract and had the contractor secure all the equipment over the winter so that we have it for the summer, yep.
Okay, so it's, it's the correct, it's not some equipment that they generally add, it's the equipment that was specific to this project?
Correct, yep, and it was all ordered, some middles all went through our engineering firm and everything, yep.
I, I thought it was just some inventory stuff, I said, what other thing? Okay, all right.
So Cliff, I have a question, this is Sandy. You said you used a different consulting's commissioning service before, Collins? And have you used CES before as well?
Yeah, CES did the Melissa Jones HVAC system, which is very similar to the one that's going in at Cox. So I think it'll work out quite well. Colliers is presently doing Baldwin, and they're in the middle of doing that one.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Is there a motion? I'll move it.
Second.
Try your minds, all in favor? Opposed, staying, refusing, hearing none, motion carries. Cliff, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too. All right, item seven, Economic Development Director, Sherry Cody, in order to report on the economic development.
Good morning, everyone, can you hear me okay?
You're fine, thank you.
Great, Tracy, can I share my screen? I just have a PowerPoint. Thank you. So I'm hoping that you can all see this, but I, can you see it? Yes?
Not yet, but Matt's on.
There we go.
Okay, great, all right. So just, I did a PowerPoint because I've been showing our property enhancement grant application results to the EDC and to Town Hall staff folks, and so I, I had this prepared already, and I wanted to share it with you. So you're familiar with our, our grant application, this was funded through ARPA. So far, we have had seven projects approved, that was done at our April EDC meeting. It's nice to see that the businesses are investing significant dollars in their projects and then also getting some assistance from us. And so I wanted to walk you through the seven projects that we have approved so far. A brand-new business out on Route One, our Boston Post Road, Raven Rose Boutique in the Strawberry Hill Plaza. A new business sign for her, you can see through her picture that she's very happy. The next three are the, actually the same applicant with three different projects. You may be familiar with Joe, who owns this plaza, Ashley's Ice Cream is doing a new sign. And then they're also doing some repairs on their parking lot and ADA access. You can see that highlighted area there, and then the Sagem Square also parking area improvement with ADA. And then we also had Vera Wolf here on the green, and you can see that there, they need to do some repair and some painting. So they applied for the grant and will be receiving that thousand-dollar award. East Creek Landing, the banquet facility are, are going to repair and replace some defective lights in their parking lot. And then finally, Jake Gresham, located at the Quonset Hut Shops, applied for this for the group, the, the businesses that are there. They are installing new sign and new sign lighting. You can see that they're changing their name from Chroma to Shops and Gallery to be a little bit more generic. So I do have more applications here ready for my subcommittee and the EDC to make some decisions on, and also expecting more applications to come in. So, so far, so good. We have the seven projects awarded so far, and I'll stop there to see if you have any questions about the grant applications before I move on.
Great, any questions?
Do you have, do you have a feel for dollars so far? And is there a, a time or dollar limit on the number of grants that you're going to address?
Yes, so the, the request that we put in for ARPA funds that was approved was twenty-five thousand dollars, and the intent was to give away twenty-five grants of a thousand dollars each. And so that is our intent right now. Obviously, we have the seven in so far, three that are sitting on my desk, and then more that are coming in. So, you know, I don't know how long this will last, the twenty-five thousand. But ideally, you know, I think that this is something that we could consider offering, you know, on a rolling basis all year. You know, somebody might start a new business in October and one. You know, somebody might start a new business in October and want to put up a sign and and ask for, you know, a reimbursement of that thousand dollars.
That's that's what I was going to ask. If there's no time limit, it's not, I think, as as business owners. See and and realize what other folks are doing that. That'll encourage them to to move forward and update their own operations, so.
Absolutely.
Time limit, it makes sense.
We've also had a little bit of a delay because folks are required to get contractor estimates and that takes a little longer now than it used to. And so people are delayed in getting their applications in because they're waiting for those estimates to come in from contractors. Um, so I'll I'll move on. This, I I debated whether to leave this slide in or not, but I did want to just update you. A couple of years ago, when Brian was here, you know, the EDC entered into an agreement with St. George's to to use seventy six parking spots in the back of their. Of their lot. And this, the intent here is to have the merchants. Around the green, most specifically on Whitfield and Water Street, to have their employees park there to free up the parking, you know, around the green for customers. And the reason that this is, you know, I'm bringing it up today is because, you know, for the last year plus two years, we haven't really had the same sort of. Uh, amount of shoppers, I guess, in the summertime because of COVID, and so we're hoping that this summer is the summer. When things get back to normal and so we'd have renewed this agreement. And hoping to make sure that those those employees use the parking and and free up the parking around the the green. At times, parking can be a bit of an issue around the green. I'm sure you have all seen that. Um, I also want.
Sherry, I do have one question on that. So I remember when Brian was involved and we redid the town parking. I don't know how to describe it behind the food, behind the marketplace. Is there any way to improve the access of those parking spaces to that? New parking lot behind the marketplace. In other words, make a more pedestrian friendly entrance in that direction too. I I know there always was a discussion. It was problematic with the different property owners and that type of thing, but has there been any discussion about improving that pathway?
Hey, Charlie, we actually did construct a sidewalk that. From St. George's driveway on the south side of the St. George's property. We actually, I think, as recall, we had to wait for a tree to be removed because the sidewalk was moving right in that area, so. Uh, that is in effect the the pathway, so.
Yeah, and I and I understand the sidewalks there, it just. It always was problematic. I mean, if there was a way to make it more. Invite, I don't know.
Yeah, we 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 had had discussions with the the Archdiocese about going across more of their property on the closer to where the barn is back there. Yeah, but they did not want to entertain that.
If the attendance for the employees to park there and not shoppers.
Yeah, but it still would be a valuable, I don't know, I always thought, you know, again, you have to convince. Diocese, but you know, it would seem to me that it could even connect all the way to the post office, the whole walking area.
Future discussions, okay.
Matt and I can can talk about that. I also wanted to update you on just businesses in general around town, new businesses, ribbon cuttings. We do have Omni Salon and Spa located on Route One. We did have a ribbon cutting. There's a photo of it for you. MHK, which has been here for at least a year, if not a little bit more, at three fifty Goose Lane. The Chamber is is sort of up and running with a lot of ribbon cuttings lately, so you'll be seeing that a lot. Deek Spagles, we just had a ribbon cutting with them last week. And then upcoming ribbon cuttings, New Haven Middle Sex Association of Realtors, you may know, out there on Boston Post Road, have have been there for a couple of years. But they're celebrating a ribbon cutting. We have a new business also on Boston Post in Bloom Floral Wholesale. Which will be having a ribbon cutting and then Raven Rose Boutique, who you saw a minute ago, was part of our grants program. She is also celebrating a ribbon cutting in May. Chamber's been very busy. Um, and then they're working on a ribbon cutting for a new business on Artistic Touch. So a couple of business updates. Also, you may know that Vietnam's Cafe has left Water Street. But there's a new business in there already. That was very, very quick. Amanda's Healthy Cooking. Um, and they have posted on Facebook that they're having a grand opening on April thirtieth. So we'll be in attendance for that. Um, and then just developments, I I usually talk to you a little about about these. You already are familiar with the, you know, four oh five Whitfield. Those units are pre-selling at more than two million dollars. I saw a couple on, I guess, Zillow or somewhere. Yesterday, going for two point seven and two point nine million dollars. Um, and then the Hubbard Road project that you're familiar with will be having their public hearing with planning and zoning on Wednesday night. Um, and then finally, just a quick little thing, we're in the very, very beginning stages of doing a.
Sherry, Sherry, can you hold for a second? I think there were some questions on.
I just had a question of how many units of four oh five?
Four oh five is twelve units, I believe.
Thank you.
And Sherry, on the Hubbard Road, um, the description there says. One hundred units, one bedroom. Hasn't there been some discussion about making some of those two bedrooms?
There was. Sure, I'll I'll take it, Sherry. Uh, at the planning and zoning meeting two weeks ago, the request was made of the developers to consider. Two bedroom, possibly three, if if at all possible. Their response was, it's not economically workable for their model. And we obviously can't force them to do that with an eight thirty G. So I doubt that that's going to be realized.
Any other questions on this slide?
No.
Okay, so finally. Uh, we're in the very, very beginning stages of doing a transportation analysis. We are very fortunate to have a a transportation expert serving on our EDC. So I have enlisted his assistance in helping us just understand our existing public transportation system. You know, seeing if we need to to do anything to enhance that and we're, like I said, just in the very beginning stages. Of of talking about that, so more to come on on that project. And that's all I have for today. Any other questions?
Good. How is, how was our coordination with Madison going and is there any projects? On the horizon jointly?
Um, so coordination is going fairly well. I split my time pretty evenly between the two towns on a daily basis. I'm in both towns every day. There are no projects in my realm that are joint projects at the moment, although, you know, there I do have ideas of things in the future. In in my opinion, it's just a little too soon to 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 really get a good handle for me on what would work jointly. But I think things like marketing and, you know, partnering with especially tourism marketing. Could be something that we do jointly down the road. In terms of planning and zoning, there may be projects that we could be doing together as well, but that's more a question for our town planner.
I had heard, I had heard that there was a project. Almost a marina-type project being planned on the river bordering our towns. Is that still in the works?
Um, from what limited information I have heard about that, yes. Erin Mannix is the new town planner over in Madison, and so she's also kind of getting a handle on projects there. And I have heard her talk about that, where that stands in 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 reality, in terms of when that will happen, I do not know, but I have heard talk about that.
It's so close to the border and I I think it's going to be utilized by. You know, people from both towns. I mean, that would seems to me that it'd be an interesting one to coordinate between towns. If there was anything that we could do, I mean.
I'll keep that in mind.
Okay. That's all I am. Sherry, thank you very much. Job though. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's fun for sure.
Yeah, really appreciate that.
All right, item eight, Parks and Recreation Director Rick Mainer. Two items, Rick.
Good morning.
And first is to consider take possible action with the three-fold requirement contrast with Atlas Pyrovision Entertainment Group for July twenty twenty-two fireworks. Or is yours?
It's great to see all the business development that Sherry, I I didn't realize all this is going on. It's fantastic to see.
We just did the fireworks last year.
So I I I got two quotes from from Atlas Pyrotechnics, uh, on the spiral vision. One is. Fifteen thousand is what we have spent the last many years. But because the cost of the fireworks gone up, the it's about forty percent less shells. If you look at the. Fifty thousand dollars, like one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight versus if we went to eighteen thousand, would would be the same shells we've had. In the past few years, that was three thousand one hundred and sixty-five. It's around close to forty percent difference in the number of shells, but not a forty percent increase in the price. They originally quoted over nineteen and I talked to them a bit and they they I said, wow, that's a big jump and they they dropped it to eighteen, but. It's the same show that we've had over the last few years. I guess the first thing I ask, though, or request is to to waive the requirement for three quotes because we. For twenty-two years now, we use Atlas. It's always been the company. We know the product, the quality of the show. Fire Marshal's always been really, really pleased with them because their safety record and they bring, they say they're going to bring and. It's just, we know what to expect. We know what we're going to get.
It's almost like every year we want to waive it. I mean, I have no problem waiving it. You have periodically just double-checked up.
We have.
The market is what it is.
Yeah.
I I have no problem. I don't know if you need a special motion to waive or anything or not.
No, we don't have to. We just award the contract.
And the only other comment I had is. Forty percent is a big reduction. Everybody's always commented about what a great show it is. Forty percent, it'd be like half.
Yeah, almost half the show.
People's walking away saying, what the heck?
Yeah, especially, you know, this is the year to get away from this. And I I I frankly would support. You know, just going for the full.
All right.
Where would the funds come from? Are we under control with that part?
I I think it's speaking with, it's either going to come from the program account or or possibly ARPA, I believe. Mary Jane said we might have some ARPA funds to help cover that.
Yeah, forty percent is too much every year. People would notice.
Absolutely.
I mean. I could see chipping away maybe in the future, but hopefully this inflation thing is only.
All right, when we, when we do a motion that does waive the bid anyway, awards.
I'll move waive in the bid.
Second. And awarding the contract all in the same motion?
We can all, yes. Any further discussion or questions? Let me try my eyes all in favor?
Aye.
Those same accusations, hearing no motion carries.
Thanks. You know, they always do a bang-up job. You were waiting, you were waiting.
It was sitting right there.
I know. I thought everybody gets up with the EDC report where you start it. Okay, I'll let it lie.
Uh, okay, item two, consider and take possible action on the use of American Rescue Plan funds for drainage improvements regarding the Jacob's Beach Parking Lot. Rick, just wanted to give a little background on what's going on, but anybody's better than that parking lot. It's it's a challenge. And what we have been discussing is earmarking some of the funds that we had allocated through the ARPA funds, which was for the splash pad. To the renovations on the parking lot, so Rick.
Well, yeah, because if you remember, there was a hundred eighty thousand that was going to go toward the splash pad and thankfully we got that anonymous gift that's paying for it. Along with the donations from people have been donating over the last few years. The parking lot, yeah, it's it's. It's it's better because public works went, they they were able to fill in some of the potholes, but they're going to come back, you know, they always do. It was. After this winter, it's the worst I've ever seen it. I mean, it was terrible. It really was bad. So we worked with Janice. To come up with a plan to regrade it, the center area where where the island is now. The public works is going to dig that out, make that kind of like a big dry well and and put stone in there so the water will be drained toward that area there to. Improve that. But along with this, it it's the parking lot, but I I'm going to ask for a couple other improvements if we can, just. I don't have dollar amounts yet. I'm just looking for, yes, we can think of taking on ARPA, then when I get the money, I'll come back. I'm sorry, get the quotes, come back, say here's what it's going to cost. I can't imagine it being anywhere near the hundred eighty thousand. I mean, I'm even close to it. But part of the other thing was we were going to expand the parking. Because of the, well, we need it anyway, but with the splash pad, it's going to just draw more people. The area just north of the picnic shelter that in the last couple of years, we've just put up stakes and caution tape. We want to formalize that to make it a guardrail. It just, it'll be better. It'll just look nicer. It'll be like the same guardrail that's there now and the other grass overflow here, which is extended basically. Again, I'll get prices on that, but I just want to find out, is that acceptable? Can we consider? All, you know, improvements to the whole area there. And the last one is there's a yard hydrant, so. A faucet that's between the two buildings. It's broken many times over the years. It's just a. It's a maybe an inch and a half pipe that just sticks out of the ground and like a pump thing on it. We wanted to make that a a water fountain like the one that's already there, you know, by the beach. And formalize that, make it better. That's. That's going to be between a water fountain and the the deck for it. It's probably around, I'm going to guess around eight thousand dollars, but again, we'll get prices for it. So I guess my my request initially was parking, but I started thinking. Well, we got to do the guardrail, we got to do the water fountain, and I want to just at least. Get a nod that, yeah, we consider ARPA funds. Let's see what the cost is going to be.
Uh, I'm fully supportive of moving those funds. That that facility is a big attraction. A lot of folks use it. You know, I happen to live down that that neck of woods. I keep a kayak down at the kayak racks and I agree, there were many times you you can't find a parking. Now, it's, so I I think beautifying some of that area, particularly around that that pump and cleaning that up, I always thought that looked a little sketchy. And then the guardrails, additional guardrails to to corral the traffic or marking, it makes sense.
I think so too. I mean, we have a few other water accessible places for the public, Chapin Island, a little bit at Shell Beach, a little bit on Toronto, but this is the town beach and. Was used a lot during COVID and I think some of that use, it might drop off a little bit, but but more people became aware of that as a resource, so. We should make it look as good as possible and there'll be a big splash when.
I'm proud of you.
So I think there'll be a lot of traffic and then I think that'll even out, but there's going to, there'll be some more traffic here, you know, just general, so. And I'm going to nag you about the. The canvas flies or whatever they're called, the the shade that was proposed when that plan was developed about five, maybe, I I think five years, but maybe it was ten years. I think that's very important because with climate change, the sun is just more intense and. You you planted those trees, which are great, but I still think we could use more shade.
So to that point, we are looking at some other options, not not the big shade structure that, because that was like three hundred thousand dollars when we originally were talking about it. But some individual ones, they're they're kind of, they're not. They're not umbrellas, but they're like, they're on a post and they have these.
Right, and then you would, they would be able to be taken, they would be like.
Yeah.
Put up in the summer and taken down in the winter, yeah.
Yeah, so we're, I mean, that's something else we're going to look at. Again, I can get prices on that too.
Yeah. I think so.
The expansion of the parking lot. Is that going to be just the grass?
It's going to be grass, yeah. And we'll line it. We'll put lines, so the cars will park, you know, what you mean, guys in lines like line athletic fields have to do it every couple of weeks probably, but.
And what is the surface of the the existing parking lot? We're not going to pave it. It's just going to be some other greater.
Yeah, reclaim it. Yeah.
Yeah, there was, there's a concern about introducing more impervious surfaces down.
That's still probably actually pretty good. I I did not want to bring up a million things. We are going to have a pile of.
Um, and how is the splash pad coming? I see.
Very, very good. It it should be barring any issues, should be ready by Memorial Day. We'll pour concrete the last week, a few days, they poured concrete. What they're waiting for is they're ready to do the concrete a week before, but there are footprints in it, those like coyote tracks and. You know, eager tracks and they had to get the handstand, the stamps, put that in, and that was holding up. They didn't have the stamps for it. They couldn't pour till they had.
It's like, there's no coyotes and eagles that can walk across.
But it looks pretty cool, it looks like coyote walked over it and then you have some like fishing prints in it and like, looks like fossils almost and, you know, eager tracks and a few others, but it's part of what the committee wanted was this, so something kids can look at and see that.
I know that donation was anonymous, but boy, I wish there was a way that we could thank, thank them.
All right, so I'm not sure we actually need a motion, we've already approved the ARPA funds, we're just using, changing. Using those, still consistent with the goals and the, the spirit of the American Rescue Plan funding, which is parks enhancements, so I'm fully supportive of it. The objection.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. We'll have a ribbon, ribbon cutting like all the businesses. An opening day, thank you, have a great day.
Okay.
I think he's, I'm catching his crazy.
Item nine, consider and take possible action on the petition received on April fourth, twenty twenty-two. Since everyone had a chance to take a look at that, this was a petition signed by, I think it was some hundred and forty users calling for a town meeting and establishment of a committee to review the basketball courts and also to potentially include a town-wide referendum on same, I think we had that ask come to us a couple, couple of meetings ago. So I'd asked Attorney Barrett, who, Pete, you're on the line, I see, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm on. I'm in an Uber car.
Nonetheless, I asked Pete to review the petition and to see if it was an appropriate call and use of the town meeting. Pete did not, was not comfortable that it was in fact a proper subject for a town meeting. So we went to our outside council, our outside bond council, shipment equipment, and I think you see their conclusion, which was, the board of selectmen are not obliged to call a special town meeting since the petition seeks to require a referendum, which is not permissible under the town charter, because the particulars, including location, scope and public safety storage building, have previously been delegated to the town standing building committee and board of selectmen respectively. And then Pete had done a little more research and over the years, there have been several petitions that were denied because they weren't proper subjects for a town meeting action as required in the town charter. And then additionally, Pete mentioned that there is no general right to petition for a town meeting or any general obligation for board selectmen to call one, one's petition, so it's within our purview to do that. That being said, I think we've talked several times about the, the plans that are already underway to determine the viability of keeping the police courts, the basketball courts at the police department. The, Lou has volunteered to be part of that committee, I have some names from volunteers in the community. And, and greatly appreciate folks' willingness to do that. At tonight's board of selectmen, of finance meeting rather, I'll be asking for a representative from the board of finance, and then both the fire commissioner and the police commissioner have indicated they would like to supply representative from both of their boards. Now, just in terms of what's going on, we have, as I said, re-engaged the engineering teams to try to maintain the facilities at, on, on the property without eliminating the basketball courts. Back to looking at redesign of two garage bays on the north side of the fire department, which was the original plan, as I think folks had recalled, right? It was actually contemplated years ago with the standing building committee, when they built that facility, they built all the mechanicals to be extended out to that, to, to additional big garage. And they're also looking to see what we can do about, well, the, the police department's needs, custom, a more customized storage facility for the police department needs as opposed to building all four of them. So that's, that's one activity that's going on right now. The second piece is we are fully engaged, Rick, should have him stay around, but fully engaged, we have received preliminary approval from the board of education to potentially put a second basketball court in addition to resurfacing and renovating the one that is there. They, last week, they were doing soil per test to ensure there's got some little bit of weapons to one side, south side of the Adams property, it's got some weapons, but the board of education, we had an engineering firm come out, it will actually fit the footprint that we're looking at. And then the last piece is, at this point, we're still moving forward, we're doing something up a bit. Relocating, just basically turning the skate park, you know, from horizontal to horizontal, creating additional space for another basketball court, as well as, they're getting pricing on lights for the entire facility because of the significant demand for pickleball and number of hours, so. Right, so, at the end of the day, water fountain, but this is the advice that we've gotten from both Pete and, as well as Attorney Ritter and his team at the shipment. Pete, is there anything you wanna add?
No, I think you covered it well and, and if the selectmen have the, the Matt Ritter opinion in particular, you know, we both looked at it independently, came to the same conclusion that this, this particular topic isn't a proper subject for top meeting. Yeah, I had nothing to add, could answer questions, although I, as I mentioned, I'm in an Uber, so I might break up again.
Well, Pete, I, I happen to know where you're going, so please root for the same home team that we both support.
Okay, we got beautiful weather.
I appreciate you including, you know, in our packet the other examples, the historical background.
Well, actually, thanks to Tracy and Karen for having found, found those materials, the background.
Well, I'm not sure, but I think even the same.
Okay, item ten, set the annual town meeting date for May ninth, twenty twenty-two at eight thirty AM at the town hall, is there a motion? Second, second. All right, we'll see how many people show up this time, Trace. Sue, Sue will be here.
Yeah, I think I've never made that one.
Yep.
I might try to break the record.
You know, as, as much. You haven't missed much.
I'm gonna. Yeah, yeah.
I think I commented in the past, during the budget sessions, the informational sessions that we, that we get into when the board of finance attends, we get such great information from all the boards and commissions about what they do, how many residents they serve and, you know, really care about what they're doing. I, I think it would be great if that could somehow, at some point in the future, I know there's not time for this meeting, but to somehow incorporate that so that everybody can have access to that information. It's, it's impressive what people are doing, what we're accomplishing.
That's a great suggestion. At the very least, we'll go over the PowerPoint I use for the, for budget presentation. We can do that, that's a great suggestion. Yeah, anything else? All right, let me try your minds, is there, oh no, is there a motion to set it?
Someone did, yes. Maybe, maybe you did that.
I might have, let me try your minds, all in favor? Close, staying recusals, hearing non-motion carries. Item eleven, appointments and resignations, act on the resignation of John Wyman's from the Waste Transfer Station Advisory Committee. I'll do so with, I'll make that motion with appreciation and regret, is there a second?
Second.
Try your minds, all in favor? Aye, close, staying recusals, hearing non-motion carries. Eleven dot two, act on the appointment of Terry Kane to the Waste Transfer Station Advisory Committee to fill a vacancy to June thirty, twenty twenty-four, I'd like to make that motion as Terry is the current chair of the Sustainable Guilford Task Force, which is in the midst of preparing their preliminary application for recertification, can't believe it's three years that it's expired, so, or is expiring. And also, just to mention, next Saturday, the Sustainable Guilford Task Force is sponsoring conjunction with CCA, CCA cog, a composting event. You can actually buy composting barrels and so forth, and that's being sponsored through Sustainable Guilford, I think, you know, there's information on the website related to that. The, you can buy them, you buy them online, they'll be delivered here, the parking lot, the town hall parking lot on next Saturday, which is also Earth Day. There is an event going on at Ballard Middle School, Park and Rec is, is coordinating that event, so, anyway, long way to say, I nominate Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, all in favor? Close, staying recusals, hearing non-motion carries. Item twelve, request for use of town properties, act on a request from the Guilford Day to use the green for the display of purple flags and the place assigned on the green advertising day we're taking place, May second through sixth, twenty twenty-two, sign placement would be April twenty-third to May sixth.
I'll move that.
Is there a second? Second, let me try your minds, all in favor? Aye. Close, staying recusals, hearing non-motion carries. Item thirteen, committee reports.
I wish I had something to say about the Woodruff property, but I don't at this moment. You're, but you felt that there was some movement at the state.
Yes, yes, there is. No, there is, there, there is some movement on the state, at the state level. And, you know, the other thing I think we might wanna mention is the affordable housing plan.
I was going to, but you, you, well, just that the affordable housing plan is not a result of the committee that is working on the Woodruff and other affordable housing initiatives in Guilford, it's part, and Matt knows this much better than I, part of a, a state mandated plan that all towns must have one in place by June, so part of that process in working with cog, right? Is each town has their own plan and it's gonna be presented to the public on the evening of May tenth, Tuesday, May tenth, in person at the community center, yeah, at seven o'clock. I have it written down, but I didn't write the time down. But it's an evening meeting, so it's probably either seven or seven thirty. And that's just an informational meeting, correct? And then we approve it as select.
We would approve it as select, right, following that, following that, here, it's a requirement of the legislation that you're, you know.
It's a tight timeline.
Yeah. This is a, a plan that's gonna need to be updated every five years. And it is the intent of the council of governments to continue to provide that consulting assistance. And the way the process worked was David Fink, who is a well-known affordable housing advocate and developer at the state, is the consultant they use. So like basically, the way the plan came together was they did a current, the current assessment of housing and what the needs are, and it's, a lot of that is socioeconomic data that's put together. And once we identified those, we put a series of strategies together, which are outlined in the document. I'll be perfectly honest with you, I don't think this, this document or any document is gonna get us to the ten percent threshold. Bar that the state set as a target for our communities, but we have the opportunity to continue to make progress towards that, which I think is essential. And just as an editorial comment, it was very unfortunate that some two weeks ago, the Connecticut Examiner did a story on Hubbard Road for affordable housing project where the attorney for the developer accused us of potentially trying to derail the project. And it's citing that there was, there were motivations there that do not exist and that we don't support affordable housing, which I would say is far as, as far from the truth as possible, but in the court of public opinion, those kind of things resonate.
On that note, I'm glad you brought, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I'm glad you brought it up because the two points that they made, I remember, it's gotta be fifteen, twenty years ago when I was on P and Z, you know, we started the, a policy, I don't know how specific it is, but I think it is in the code about sidewalks. I mean, it was a standard operating procedure that, you know, any major commercial buildings at that point of development, you know, required sidewalk and to, to not consider sidewalks for affordable housing, where you want the access or anything, just to me, to me, that's an automatic and, and, and why would you want any project to jeopardize what? The article was strange to me, I, the two points they made to me were no brainers, of course you want sidewalks, of course you wanna protect the.
Right. Yeah, we, we, we haven't really heard any negative things either from the town or from individuals, but there is a process. Um, the other thing, the Housing for Economic Development Plan Committee, our local committee, I know, I think it comes out of hell, I don't know, I haven't figured it out. We are gonna have an informational meeting, not, not the one on the tenth, but a more informal meeting at a public place like the library or the community center about the various things that we do have in town, because even though we've emphasized these over the last couple of years, it's always good to have another pressure session to talk about where, where are we with the Woodruff property, even if we just keep saying the same thing that we're waiting for state funding, the exist, the existing things that we do have around town, both, both as over fifty-five and not, if we could touch on the Hubbard Road and then the private developer like Chris Widmer and I'm working with Jamie Stein on that and it'll be spring or summer.
Sandy, do you have any feel, I mentioned that, you know, we're not at the ten percent, you know?
We're at two percent or something.
But how do we compare to our peer group in the state?
We, we, according to David Fink, who is knowledgeable and reputable person in this, we are higher than a lot of other suburban towns, it's, it's a dubious honor, you know, but we, our two percent is higher, so.
Years ago, we talked about the percentage, it was very depressing, when they compared it to other communities.
When Chris Widmer's projects are finished, the Woodruff hopefully is completed and, you know, whatever goes through on Hubbard Road, that'll, that'll put to that percent, I don't know whether it'll get us to three percent, I, I really don't know, but those are more.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think we ought to emphasize where we stand and, you know, 'cause the ten percent is a arbitrary number that was picked and I don't even know where the logic came that developed that number, but I think, you know, if we compare ourselves to our peer group, it won't be as depressing because I always felt that we were on the leading edge or trying to be proactive, let me, over the years, so.
And as our former town, town planner used to point out, there are apartments in town that meet that, but because they're not deemed restricted, they don't go into the two percent, so.
That would be good to know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, another interesting thing that we talked about earlier in the meeting and Sherri's presentation was, I hadn't heard about that public transportation study that's, that's pretty key in all this too, we were so restricted as far as where in town we can, we can do projects, so.
No, that, the transportation plan is designed to also help inform, you know, where, where affordable housing developers should go. It's all, it's also to enhance the access to some of the transportation votes and that's gonna include, you know, evaluating what we do so well for the senior and the handicap or disabled folks, the, the four or five buses that we have that we drive folks around town, but more importantly, working with the Connecticut Transit, but also exploring whether or not the Greater Haven Transit District or the night town.
Right, yeah.
Consortium.
Even just expanding a bus stop at Longo Road at Route one, connecting sidewalks down Hubbard Road, that whole thing, I mean, that just, to me emphasizes the need for sidewalks and any development. I, I couldn't believe it when I read that article, okay.
Okay. Anything else on the committee reports and just something that I've been meaning to ask this question, do we feel as if there are any, you know, I can't answer this right now, if there is a need for us to create any, any other subcommittees or, or committees for us to participate in on a regular basis, so let's just tuck that away for, for the next one.
Yeah, I'll give it some thought, I don't necessarily have additional committees, but I do agree with Susan's point, you know, and I think Sherri's report again brought it to light today that the more we bring up of what's going on by these different committees, gets it out there in the, in the public domain, people appreciate that there's a lot going on.
There is, I agree. Okay, correspondence?
I did hear from a resident who, it was about the people being unprepared for the fact that we had a budget referendum and a suggestion that we do something from town hall, some sort of a email list or something like that, I mean, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, but there are really so many ways for people to be informed.
I think the mass notifications, I know it's always been. I think the mass notifications, I know there's always been hesitancy about using it, but. I, I, uh, I, I think that's, you know, a tool that we could use.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll check with the state, uh, around the use of that.
In the emergency, there's actually two sources, yeah, I mean, the notices that you had, I mean. I remember even getting some feedback about, please, we have to hear this again about COVID, but to me, I, I just think that they're important. And, and using your, your little notices like that, excuse me, um. It, it's important, I mean, to the vote voting is important like that, and just getting it out there, I, I, I think we should use the system better, but.
I think so, especially the budget does affect every person in the town, so it, it isn't just a, a subgroup that would want to know about it. And even though I feel that we do a good job letting people know, and it's been April for the last two billion years, but still. If somebody feels they didn't know, and we have the ability to let them know, it's just one other way to say, you know?
Yeah.
And people can opt out of the notifications if they don't want.
Yeah, um, and that's, I think, has been the challenge in the past is, you know, using it for uh, uh, emergency purposes and now. But I think we've basically broken that rule uh, with the weekly messages that's been sending out for two plus years now. So, um, I, I think that's a good point, I think we can probably start to think that, and the question there is, are there other things that we can use it for, uh, like, uh?
I don't want to get into the trap of overusing it because then people start ignoring it, but.
Yeah, but something that has, as, as you said, has widespread an impact, as opposed to, like, you know, something that would be very narrow, like a deadline for the secret tax fees. Um, you know, things like that, because we could start, we could go, we could go down a road.
I, I will say, other communities that I own property and have every Friday, I'm like newsletter.
Letters.
Yes.
Okay.
A townwide newsletter over, electronic?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Just every Friday you get a blurb that, you know, this is going on, and, you know, it's, it's what's going on. Town Hall, not necessarily what's going on at the library and everywhere else, but it clues. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's something to trade, something that we can start to discuss. Largely going to fall on Tracy's shoulders, but uh, with my assistance, I'm sure. Well, this is, this is.
I got new business.
That would be.
A- as you may or may not know, the, the park down the end of Broad Street, the uh, Holmstead and everything. Uh, the, the, the bulkhead, two sections, I think there have fallen into the river. Okay, and I, I asked Sarah, maybe you could come up here from the representative land trust. The property is owned by the land trust, but the town owns the parking lot next door, which is oh, not next door, right alongside there. Which has always been problematic that, you know, there's no real structure preventing cars from going into the river and the rest of it. And, you know, but now we're at emergency stage and the land trust is not in a position uh, financially uh. You know, to deal with this because, you know, you're talking, you know, major construction, I mean, the, the wall is a substantial wall, been there for a hundred years probably. Uh, and uh, I, I'll let Sarah.
Where it fell in, is it, is it the town property part where the wall fell in?
Fortunately, it's not, it, it's land trust property, but, you know, uh, we do have the parking lot right next to, to it and uh. You know, something's got to be done because it's a valuable park, entrance to the town and that type of thing, and I'll let Sarah explain because she's got, you know, some. Facts and figures about what's going on there and uh, my question is, I, I think, you know, if we can find a way for the town to work together with the land trust. And, and get this uh, irrepairing and long-term fix, I mean, it, uh, let's take it.
So, um, so it's a, it's a park that's obviously a major downtown asset, um, and the land trust has been watching this wall for years. And, and my understanding is it was repaired the last time by the Lee family, probably with no permits in like the seventies. Um, so, uh, we had them look at it and, and try to guess sort of how long we had, we've been looking at it more and more closely, it's clear that it was starting to fail in certain areas. This is a place with title action every day, so it just gets behind the wall and it's dry, yeah, so it's, I mean, it's obviously not, not a place that's going to last forever. The land trust generally avoids any kind of structures because we don't fundraise for structures, we fundraise for conservation, for land and natural resources. So, um, so in the last year, we've talked to Kevin McGee about how the permitting would work, I mean, this is a big ugly project. Um, yeah, because it's title, so army corps, the whole thing, and so, um, so Janice and I were going to take a walk and see kind of what was required. And if there was a way the town could help us, and lo and behold, we arrived and something had just actually fallen in for the first time, so she got to see it firsthand. Um, so, you know, this is a wall where people, even if we ask them, they sit on it, they crab on it, they let their dogs run along at their children, and we ask them not to, we put up signs that do it anyway. People kick stones from the wall into the river, um, so it's, it's a very big public interface and, and we need it to be safe. Um, you know, the land trust obviously does our best to keep them off of it, but we, we can't make them stop. But at the same time, it's also an asset, you know, people take their wedding pictures there, they go for picnics there, you know, so. We know that, that the community enjoys the park and we also know that we can't afford to pick, fix this whole wall. So, um, so it was, I was asked to come today and a suggestion had been made about maybe some art funding. Um, you know, land trust is not in the habit of coming to the town and asking for things, um, we usually do it all ourselves, but we also don't do the structures. So, maybe this is the kind of thing that you guys would agree is, is an appropriate park improvement, um, you know, along the lines of some other things that we've heard about today. So, um, we, currently the plan is signage, um, we talked to Janice about putting some gravel behind it to sort of slow the fail, but. Um, at least one section of it is quite unstable, it's very, very long, um, the ends are not as bad, and then when you get to the town property. Um, there is no wall in front of it, and so I don't know if Janice wanted to touch that with a ten-foot pole, but, um. But that, you know, it, it could be a chance to talk about, Charles is very concerned about someone just going right into the drink when they park there, they forget to put it in the park and. Yeah, all there is is a couple posts to stop a car, so, you know, whether or not those things happen at the same time is your decision as a town, but, um, it's, it's an area that needs attention. And I will say, you know, the land trust board has not, we have not decided what to do, you know, we, we are not sure that, that we want to continue with fixing it. Um, it's really something that we have to understand how the money would work, so.
Yeah, my, you know, in talking to Sarah, I mean, the town has a history of working with the land trust and different projects and that type of thing. And, and there's, you know, the, the, Sarah has started the outline, I mean, some of this is emergency stuff. That has to be done immediately to protect the public and that type of thing, but some of it is long-term and much bigger project, whether, you know, we can uh. Apply for some art funds or uh, or, or what, that, that would probably apply to longer, bigger issues of getting the old ones rid away, but there's probably. There are some immediate needs uh, in, in the town, uh, could work together with the land trust and get some of that.
It looks like a two-step thing, so, so we, we have already started to get some estimates on what it could cost, it looks like it's a, it's a. You get someone to help you with the permitting process, that's like a job of its own, it's a, it's a big, big task, um, and design, so sort of what design would be acceptable and would pass the permits. And then the building is a section, so, yeah, so we have spoken to some people and Janice is working also with some contacts that she has in this era where it's hard to get contractors to call you back, she thought she could help us maybe. Um, so we're starting to assemble numbers now, but, I mean, we're talking two, three hundred thousand dollars.
When you say permitting process, you mean it's deep in the army corps and that, not, not the town permits?
No, that took us a few months to be sure of, but, um, but we don't think that that is, I mean, I think that the town would take the lead from what they recommends. Um, but Janice said, we are in an emergency situation now, and she wanted to talk to deep and tell them we need to get this, you know, when, when the land trust calls, let them, you know, move along because it's pretty serious.
Yeah, there is a, there is an expedited permitting process for repairs under emergencies, so, uh, at that, I know the chances from what we've done, I think it's called CLP.
You know, and I don't know if the, if the permitting changes once it's in the river, you know, I, like, if, it's one thing if it's constructed and you're repairing it, it's another thing if it's all fallen, it's two different kinds of permits, so, yeah, we'd like to.
What I wanted to do is bring Sarah here today and see what the, this board's appetite is, number one, and working with the, the land trust in, in the emergency. You know, stabilizing where we are now and going forward with the bigger project, uh, and applying whether it be our funds or whatever, uh. I, I don't know whether we need motions to, to put this in action or how technically.
When you said the land trust, um, doesn't do structures, it does land. Is there, if we went forward and the town came up with some of the money, would the land trusts come up with any funding or not?
We, I mean, we could, we would fundraise separately, because it's, it's what we do is when we ask our members to donate, we say we're doing it for property, and so we would have to.
I'm aware of that.
Take it again, so, so we would have to do it separately than what we normally say we're doing, and that's okay, we can certainly do a finite thing, yes. Um, I think one of the things that we're looking for guidance on is sort of what is the process with the art funds, Janice said. Um, she thinks it's, since it's public funds, you need at least a couple estimates, um, from each phase of this, and, and we can do that, we've got one from each phase already. Um, but, but then if we got those and presented it in town, what is the process to access those funds if that is something that you all approve? What's the time?
At this level, yeah.
I, I, I actually like the, you know, the sort of motion that we would support the use of our funds for his project, uh, those funds, uh, the, the sum of which yet to be determined. But, uh, that this, this board supports the efforts to restore and preserve that, uh, that asset.
Is that a motion?
I mean, it, it's almost a, a, a safety motion, I mean, listening to what you're saying about people walking on it.
And Sarah can continue to work with Janice as town employee.
Yeah, great, we'll make, we'll make, oh.
I mean, there's a lot of other very valid reasons, but when you tell us about what's going on down here, it's a little scary.
Right, yeah, it's a valuable resource for the community, we're lucky that the land trust happens to own it and protect it that way, but, uh, I think. I think that the, the parking area is long overdue for upgrades.
So we should do both, we should, while, while we're there, we should, I should do a work together and make the whole place.
Yeah.
Safe. Agree. All right.
Yeah.
So that's sort of testing.
Awesome.
All right.
All right, thank you, so, so I'm going to proceed with the plan of two estimates for each, that's what we're thinking for the, the building and, and the design, and then separately for the construction. So you'll let me know if it needs to be three or if there's anything else, because I, I haven't seen how this money travels through the town exactly, um, so I'll meet some guys. I know, I can tell, okay, all right, we'll just keep.
But, you know, the bottom line is, we, we want to restore and protect that area.
Another town employee you might want to talk to is Mary Jane, she understands the property too.
All right.
From the.
Yeah, but you have really authorization now to, to present.
Okay, thank you.
First, you're welcome, thank you, Sarah, thanks for all the work you do. Okay, any other new business? Public forum, thank you for your patience, uh, we want to address the board public forum, come on up, name, name and address for the record.
Okay. Um, Julie Schlesel, one seventy-seven Stepstone Hill Road. Hi, good morning, uh, well, I saw the article in the paper and was very hopeful, but after today's meeting, I didn't feel as hopeful. About the basketball courts, I know, it's just me, um, but. Um, I just feel that there's something like this out of touch with what people want to keep being in the courts where they are. And I, I'm very disappointed if that doesn't happen, um. So, I mean, if you look at the caseloads, you were talking about youth and family services, uh, there's not a lot of, of, uh. Avenues for kids or teenagers, especially the older teenagers in town, the courts are a central part of their um, activities. Um, and I think that, um, talked about, um, expanding at Adams and fixing it, I don't think that's the same thing as the location that the. Police uh, courts because of the accessibility, the schools have different hours, so if the high school kids get out, they're, they're not going to be able to go over to those courts during the. While the school is in session, I just don't think it's a good alternative still, and I don't think, um, that Bittner is a good alternative. Um, I think that the fact that it was originally the fire station, they had all mechanicals are set up, I guess, and they were talking about putting another building there. It seems like that's how things should go, uh, in my opinion, and, um, it doesn't make sense to rip up the courts that are there. Um, and in this article, it said, um, some sort of deal has been reached as of yet, and I was just wondering with whom are. We talking about that's dealing with, like, um, because I, I've noticed that a few times, it talks about a, a deal being reached, but there hasn't been a task force set up. So who is the deal?
I haven't read that article, can you read the whole sentence about the deal?
Oh. First selection, Matt Hawley, who has himself used the courts with friends and family for decades, said he could not comment on whether some sort of deal has been reached as of yet. But did stress he was confident that a solution would satisfy all parties, um, is still possible. I have copy, if anybody wants a copy of the full article, it's, they're downstairs.
You know, the town doesn't write that article and, um.
I was a responsible question specifically about whether any deals have been reached.
And the headline, when I read the headline, I thought, what, what, I, you know, it's like, what, has this been solved? Then I read the article very carefully, and everything in the article is true, um, we are going to form a task force, we are relooking at the property. At the fire safety complex, perhaps to see if two, both things could be accommodated, so. The headline uh, was misleading, I, I'm sorry, Ben Rayner's on the call and he works for the paper, I don't think he wrote the headline, but, um, I think it was an unfortunate headline. That's my opinion, um, I'm speaking for the board.
Yeah, in addition, in terms of Bittner Park, I'm there all the time playing pickleball, there is a need, even though I know we just put those pickleball courts, if money's going to be spent. Um, uh, I think more pickleball courts, it would, would affect, I mean, we have waiting lists, there's not enough capacity. So, uh, if we were to do something up at Bittner, I would rather see, or I, I think a lot of people that you speak to, I spoke to hundreds of people about this basketball court issue. And I haven't had one negative, um, answer in terms of leaving them where they are, and also I play pickleball, I talk to people all the time. And, uh, we'd like to see, instead of the, the plan about putting basketball courts, having more pickleball courts, I don't know how that option starts, but. Uh, before this gets in process, um, I'd like maybe that to be looked at. Um, so, I don't know, I know there, and also, um, the police needs versus the fire needs. The fire needs sound like they could be met with the addition on the, uh, there, and the police needs, I'm not sure what they are, but it does seem like there's room next to the animal shelter. But I don't know, you know?
There's a, there's a training facility that is slated to be put, uh, adjacent to the animal shelter.
Oh.
And that, that was also approved at the same, uh, same referendum.
Okay, and, um. Uh, so it does feel like there's no process for this, only because the signatures that were submitted got dismissed by the, um, attorney. So, I just feel, I feel helpless, I hate to say.
Well, I'm sorry you feel helpless, but, uh, this is moving, this is moving at a pace that is rather appropriate for town government.
Okay.
We are, we are starting the process to do the homework, to get the information that will inform, uh, a task force. If, if we even need a task force, one of the possibilities, the outcomes here, I'm not promising this, is, is that if they can come up with a design. That satisfies the police and fire needs on that facility without the tennis courts, I don't think there's a need to put a task force together. Um, so, uh, again, we're doing the homework to inform the, the, the task force as to what's possible. Uh, and I think, you know, quite honestly, I, I, I think that process needs to happen. Um, you know, and it's going to happen through the, the appropriate channels, which are the police commission, the fire commission, the respective, uh, chiefs. Uh, and then the, uh, and, and the engagement with, uh, architects and or landscape managers, so that process is started.
Okay.
Just because we haven't put a committee together to talk about it, doesn't mean that the work isn't being done right now.
I mean, I've always voted regularly, but I've never experienced, you know, the process, so.
Well, I, I will tell you this, I use the term, uh, very often, it was at a glacial pace, uh, but things traditionally get done, um, it just might not be the. And the other, the other thing is that when, when it would be perfectly clear, and I know in a previous article, I was quoted the same, saying, nothing is going to happen.
Yeah.
Nothing is going to happen, we're not going to one night show up with bulldozers and rip the courts up, that is just, that's not going to happen. If it turns out that there is no way to effectively meet the needs of, uh, our, our, our public safety operations. Then that, you know, that, that's going to have a full and fair betting in the community, that information will be there. What is taking place right now is every effort to preserve the courts where they are.
Thank you.
And but also, as I mentioned, you know, Adams and also improvements at Bitter, as you just said, could go hand in hand with, even if we keep them, some of those things could possibly be developed as well.
What forum do I use in terms of the pickleball court idea? Because I know that that's. So I just talked to Rick.
No, well, you can talk to Rick certainly, but Park and Rec has its own commission, like a board, and they and it ultimately comes here. But it's like a lot, Public Works has a commission, the library has a board, each entity has some, you know, a group of citizens, volunteer citizens, who also, so you would start with Rick and the Park and Rec.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Pickle courts.
Pickle, yeah, pickleball. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie.
And could somebody else, Janice speak?
I'm I'm good too. I'm, I just want to introduce myself. We've talked before, Kim Mastrian O'Guile, and I'm interested in being on that committee if it gets to that point, but I'm, you know, confident that you guys are doing all you can to to help support. I mean, it there there, I know there were just a small portion.
Yeah, yeah.
Just your name and address.
Name and address for the record.
Kim Mastrian O'Guile and seventy four Stepstone Hill Road. That petition was just a small portion of the people that were interested in keeping the courts where they are. I mean, it's very important to the town that we do that, and it sounds like you are making a concerted effort to try to preserve them, so that is appreciated. And I just wanted to introduce myself, and if we end up moving forward with the committee, if that's needed, then, you know, I. So, but no, I do appreciate that. I mean, there is a huge interest in the town to to preserve it, so.
Believe me.
Yeah.
I know that pretty well.
Yeah, so those signatures were just a small portion, so, um, I just I just feel like it, the petition was dismissed and just to be forewarned, I think you've kind of irked a lot of people with with that, so I would just, I just wanted to to let you know that there there might be a little bit of backlash on that one, just.
Comes with the territory.
Just a heads up.
It's too bad people are seeing this as adversarial. I mean, I, it shouldn't be that way. I I I would think there'd be a genuine understanding that our board and a lot of other people in town are trying to make this work out the right way, sincerely. But the way it's coming across with signs all over town and it's it's feeling adversarial, and I think that's too bad, so.
Well, it's even some of the personal attacks that we've been subjected to. To Matt's point about developing information for a task force, I think the information that is brought to light and developed to convey to the public is going to be very important because at this point in time, you know, we to Susan's point, it's become an emotional issue and there's no need for that.
Well, you you had touched on having like a a forum where people could go to to get information, and you were talking about like communications and the the phone call. It's just, there are a lot of people who are very busy in town, and we're not able to keep our fingers on every committee and what's going on. Had I been aware of this earlier, I probably would have gone to, you know, you guys earlier and seen what we could do before it became an issue. Um, I'm just wondering if there's some kind of way to formulate like a bullet points of what's happening in town, you know, put it up on the, you know, town website, you know. And because to spend time going through all the minutes of all the commissions, it's it's impossible. So you you really don't have an idea of what everyone's working on, because it's a very busy town with a lot of commissions that are doing a lot of things. So, you know, I I don't know if it's it's possible to just kind of have a like a highlight reel of
what's going.
what's going on, like have like some kind of a, you know, that's the cent central point where you could go and say, oh, okay, Parks and Rec is working on this, and, you know, the police commission's working on that.
Good point. We talked about that a little earlier.
Yeah.
I'll work with our communication specialist, Tracy Brinkman, to see what we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any else? Anybody on the Zoom call that wanted to? Okay, so. Is there a motion going to executive session? Yeah, invite you, yeah. I don't think there's anybody here that we're inviting in for this one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for comments.
Thank you.
Is there a motion come out of executive session?
So it's almost second.
Let me try, it's all in favor. Those extensions, your gun motion carries. Uh, we had discussion around some appeals on the elderly tax relief program. No motions were made, no actions were taken. We will endeavor to collect some additional information prior to us making a decision on these appeals, so. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Your try, mine's all in favor.
All right.
And I, those of the state, business, very good, motion carries. Thank you.